Okay, last application for this evening is Jiffy Lube.
Jiffy Lube, located at 1161 and 1171 Ridge Road and 974 Jackson Road. Applicant Gutenheim Development Services LLC is requesting a use variance and area variances to allow a lot area of 36,537 square feet where a minimum of 45,000 square feet is required, and a nine-foot south side setback where 20 feet is required, associated with the construction of a 3,000-square-foot Jiffy Lube auto care shop on the proposed .83-acre parcel consisting of existing SBL numbers 080.13-2-1, 080.13-2-2, and 080.13-2-52, located in an MC medium-intensity commercial district under Section 225-17 of the code of the town of Webster.
Great, good evening, nice to be here. My name is Beth C. Brug. I'm with Woods-Ovea Kilman. Chris Wey from Boulder Engineering is here with me tonight. We're glad to be here on this application, best for last, I think. I thought I'd start. We brought some plans, I think you have plans in the materials, but we're here tonight to request a use variance to allow a Jiffy Lube, which is an auto service-type use in the MC district, as well as a couple of area variances in connection with the project. Can you hear me okay, this microphone?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Do I need to carry it with me? Yeah, okay. So I'm just gonna walk over here to the plan. So you're very familiar, I'm sure, with the corner of Ridge Road and Jackson Road. This is the bank over here, we have a strip plaza over here, there's some homes here, there's a house here, a house here, and this is our site. It actually consists of, I think we have a subdivision somewhere on here. It's currently four parcels. There's a corner parcel that has the house and garage here. There's a second parcel that has this house and extends, it's a deep parcel that goes back. There's a commercial parcel here that had a commercial building and another house that are not part of the use variance request, but are part of the re-subdivision. And then there's a house over here at 974 Jackson Road that's involved in the application that is being outside of our, outside of our, I'm sorry, it's this one, outside of our development site. So the plan is to carve out this corner area, about .84 acres, for development for a Jiffy Lube, which is an auto-related use. They do oil changes, brakes, a bunch of other, let's see, I wanna make sure I get it right. So they do, you know, all types of minor vehicle repair, no heavy repair, oil changes, tire replacements, alignments, brake service. While it is an auto-use, all of the activity related to the Jiffy Lube occurs inside the building, or is that building here? So we're proposing a 3,000-square-foot building. It's a very low-intensity type of the use. Essentially, if they're successful, they're aiming to have, you know, 30, 35 customers a day, 20 to 25 is more typical, and when they open up, they will probably start with significantly less than that until they build up their business. The idea is that customers come in, they drive in, they get their service, and they go on their way. It is a destination, they don't generate significant amounts of traffic. They are an auto-related use, but again, all activity occurs inside the building. It's, the proposal is to do a really nice brick building consistent with some of the newer development in town, such as the Royal Car Wash, I think the Max Pizza, Pizzeria, I think there's a few other newer brick buildings in the area. Let's see. The planning board took a look at this recently, they saw a concept plan. I believe they sent a letter to the zoning board recommending approval of, they said they were comfortable with the use variance and comfortable that it will not generate a high volume of traffic, it's a low-impact use to the neighborhood, as opposed to some of the previous applications. In terms of the application in front of you, I thought I'd go through the use variance first, that's kind of like the meatier part of the application. I did submit some information to you. The property has a common owner. The property was originally purchased when Roe Fono opened up in town. He operated from 2004 to 2016 in the commercial building. Unfortunately, when Xerox and its executives stopped needing photo finishing and processing, you know, his business went down, and he eventually closed this location. When he acquired the property, he originally thought he was gonna be here for a while and possibly expand. So what currently exists is the commercial building and the existing houses. The houses are non-conforming structures, they don't meet code, they are residential-type structures, they're deteriorating, they're in pretty poor condition, they don't meet setback requirements, you know, they're, they're not anything that is consistent with the current zoning and would be very difficult to repurpose. The house at, at the corner here, they've had a gentleman with a type of repair business, he's basically been using the property rent-free in exchange for paying the electric. He's basically been maintaining the property, because they've had break-ins, I think all the copper's been stolen, you know, all of the, the house is really just not habitable, it's kind of outlived its life. So I think, you know, this project offers an opportunity to really clean up the corner. The, let's see, the package we gave you, or that we submitted, I've included sort of a summary of all of the marketing history of the property. Shortly after Roe moved in, I think there was some interest in the property from Walgreens, they would have, that would have required him to relocate. They were also his largest competitor at the time, that didn't go anywhere. He operated until 2016. I kind of gave you a summary. I'd be happy to go through all of it in detail, but I think it's, you know, let me know how much you'd like me to repeat. But it's been listed by, you know, numerous brokers. Caliber Brokerage currently has the listing, and there's a letter from Jake Rivera included in the application, essentially explaining all the interests that existed in the property, kind of the history of the potential uses of the property, you know, the, in 2016, 17, Fast Track was interested in the property, put the property under contract, they started the approval process. I don't know if this board actually denied them, but they were not well-received at the town, and they eventually terminated the contract. And I know Don may remember if that was, if it was denial.
It was a strong, I believe there were variances.
I thought she said Fast Track.
Well, Fast Track was 2017?
I don't remember the Fast Track.
Yeah, they told me 2016, 17, I mean, they get that this far.
I don't think that ever came here.
Maybe, yeah.
We addressed in 2019, I guess the meeting minutes were far, we addressed the, there was a strip plaza proposal, but it encompassed all the sites.
Right, so Fast Track took a look at it, Fast Track was interested. Burn Dairy has, has been interested in it, but they're essentially the same type of use as Fast Track, and given the reception they got on the Fast Track, they did not pursue the Burn Dairy. Jiffy Lube is an auto-type use, but, you know, very different from a gas station, there's no outdoor pumps or activity, there's no large trucks. And then Taylor Construction, Taylor Builders, did put the property under contract for some type of a commercial building that would have been anchored by a medical-type use. That user found another location, because there's a tremendous amount of available space, so they found a, kind of a preferable location, and that contract was terminated. So that is the, kind of the history of the site. Now, the application for the use variance, we're not asking for use variance for all of the owner's property, we're requesting it only specific to the Jiffy Lube and this parcel. The broker's already finding that by marketing and marketing the property with this corner improved with the Jiffy Lube, just cleaning up this corner and having a compatible commercial use, has actually been very helpful in the marketing of the remainder of the properties. So they don't have anything lined up here at the present time, but there is more interest now that they know that the corner is gonna be cleaned up. Let's see. Let's see. Some of the reasons that the property hasn't been successfully marketed, you know, I'm not, I don't have the expertise here, but we do have the letter from, from Caliber, really talking about kind of the mix of challenges. There's some challenges, the retailers, the businesses that are looking for sites, this site is not really a, it's not really central enough on Ridge Road to get the, you know, quick-service-type drive-through restaurants, which I think at one point they were encouraged to pursue. So there's not enough traffic here for some of the retailers looking for space. The other issues are just the kind of the redevelopment cost, there's only certain kinds of businesses that are looking to build new construction, there's a lot of available space. And I think Jake has kind of given you a narrative of all of the different businesses that he's approached and that they reached out to. Caliber, I think, is a fairly well-known commercial broker in town. They've been representing the property for the past couple of years, they have presented it to numerous national, regional companies, they've presented it to other brokers, they have a, you know, a network of brokers, they've sent flyers out, they've sent emails, they've used Lucenet, they've used some of the other online platforms. I think they've done the ICSC, which is the International Conference of Shopping Centers, which is sort of a marketplace where people go and look for tenants and occupants. They've done really everything that a commercial broker would do to try to find a, you know, a good commercial use for the property. So I think that Jake's done a pretty good job at summarizing the marketing efforts, but I'm, I'm happy to, you know, answer more questions about that. The existing hardship, so the property owner obviously is paying taxes and insurance. I did give you a income and expense statement in your application. I'd be happy to go through that and through those numbers. He does have some mortgages, he's basically losing money. The house, let's see, this building is no longer occupied, I don't even know if the gentleman who maintains it is still doing that. This house is supposed to be a two-family, the second floor is not habitable, the first floor does have an occupant. 974 does have a tenant, it's not included in the application, other than that a portion of the land is included. So, and then his current property over here, which is as part of the application, does have, this residence does have an occupant, the commercial building, I think, is empty. Let's see. So I think we have tried to, I think we can demonstrate that the applicant cannot generate a reasonable term for permitted uses, there just aren't permitted users out there who are interested in this property. I think they've worked pretty diligently to try to market it. Again, I've given you information dating back to, I think the first broker that had the listing here was Pyramid back in 2009, I think they had some of the property, then followed by Magellan, followed by Mission Commercial Realty. In 2015, Hawk Commercial took over, and Caliber Brokerage took over, most recently in 2018. Let's see. Okay, so the second criteria is whether the hardship related to the property is unique. I think in this case, it is unique. We are, you know, every piece of property actually has some uniqueness. There's some uniqueness to this location, it does not have the traffic volumes to attract the type of users that you might want in the medium-density commercial district. It is a challenging location, it does not have the co-tenancies and the neighboring uses that often businesses are looking for. There are a lot of residential still over here, and while the area becomes more commercial, it, you know, it has more potential, but, you know, it's really a mixed, a mixed bag over here in terms of the neighboring uses. It is high-intensity commercial on the opposite side of the street, and it's residential zoning to the south, so it's a very mixed zoning area. And again, the cost of new construction being very high, there's just only so many users in the market that are willing to build new construction, and this isn't an optimal location because of the traffic counts. Let's see. The existing structures, again, they are in, in really bad shape. I think that cleaning up the corner would be beneficial and really just bring up the whole neighborhood. They're non-conforming structures, they'd be difficult to repurpose, and I think knocking them down and putting in a modern, code-compliant development really would be beneficial. You know, the Jiffy Lube itself is a 3,000-square-foot building, it is a brick building, all the repair work is done inside the building, they have four or five employees, it's a daytime office-type of a use in terms of, the hours of operation are no greater than, I think, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and maybe less than that on certain days. So it's really a, kind of a good, I think, commercial transitional use for an area that also has nearby residential. The, let's see, lost my train of thought here. So whether we're gonna alter the essential character of the neighborhood, I guess we're talking about improving the corner, I think that this project as a whole is gonna really upgrade and improve the character of the neighborhood. It's, the use is consistent with the character of the neighborhood. It certainly isn't the most intensive, intense use here. The bank is a drive-through, we've got a car wash, Royal Car Wash that had a use variance, we've got, we don't have any auto-use immediately across the street, but there is some not too far down. It's really pretty much a mixed area. We would be cleaning up and reducing the number of curb cuts and driveways. You know, you typically wouldn't have commercial curb cuts this close to the intersection, as I think you probably know. So we're reducing the number of driveways, we're eliminating some of these non-conforming buildings, we're upgrading the site. Other than the variances that we are requesting, and actually the only one that's really specific to this site is the, the acreage, this is a little smaller than code allows, but if you look at how the code, the parcel is carved out, it's really carved out to leave this building intact, leave this house intact, and really put the lines where they belong, given the existing conditions and structures on the property. The variance over here that we're requesting over for 974 Jackson Road is really internal to the, to the property. So I think it would be, in terms of the character of the neighborhood, I think that the use we're proposing is consistent with the character of the neighborhood. It's a low-intensity use, it's lower intensity than some of the other commercial uses. The quality of the development is also gonna help bring up the character of the neighborhood and support the character of the neighborhood by inviting, you know, quality users to the remaining property. The more good, solid uses you have, the more additional businesses are gonna wanna come into the, into the neighborhood. Let's see. The alleged hardship is not self-created, the hardship is really the result of the existing conditions, we have, you know, pre-existing buildings, pre-existing driveways, and an inability to market the property for permitted uses. As far as the area variances, as I said, we're requesting two area variances, one of which is for the size of the Jiffy Lube parcel, and one of which is for the setback, let's move to this plan here. This was the other, this is the other direction. So here is 974 Jackson. So we now have a 9.1-foot setback here, where code requires 20. Again, it's internal to the subdivision, and the second variance, as I mentioned, is for the size of the lot. Now, while we do need a variance, I would point out that the development itself of this parcel is completely code-compliant. We're not creating any setback variances, we've got lots of green space, we're not excessive on our parking, we have a really nice-looking building proposed. So there's nothing about the project itself that creates any non-conformities as far as this parcel. So we think that this is really the appropriate size, you know, you don't want a property line running through another building, or running through, you know, somewhere that just isn't appropriate. In respect to the side setback variance, maintaining 974 really provides this kind of a transitional buffer to the residential zoning to the south. So the plan is to leave this house in place. I know that there was a comment, there's some DRC comments, and specifically there was a comment about that variance and that house, and I don't know if you want me to go through the DRC comments now, or should I hold off? I can speak to this one a little bit.
You might as well continue.
Okay, great, so there was a comment, I don't know if everybody had a chance to look at it, concerned about maintaining the 100-foot buffer and recommending that there be a condition on approval that more future variances be granted should this property be redeveloped. I certainly appreciate concerns for what might happen to the property, but I don't think that would be an appropriate condition, because the applicant, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen here, but whatever does happen here, if they do need a variance, they're gonna have to go through this process, and they're gonna have to demonstrate that they meet the requirements, the criteria for the granting of the variance, and that's really the appropriate time to consider whether or not the variance, a variance is appropriate. At this point, there's no plan to do anything with the house, other than to leave it here. This setback really has no impact on, on anyone, but keeping the house here, I think, does, you know, benefit the adjacent residential zoning. We also, as Chris had pointed out to me, have a sewer easement through here, so there's really some other issues kind of with this area, so, you know, I don't think that this setback variance really has any impact on, on anyone. Let's see, I think I covered that. I could go through the other area variance criteria. The character of the neighborhood, I don't think the variances are gonna have any adverse impact or produce any detrimental impact on any of the nearby properties or character of the neighborhood. If anything, we are trying to preserve kind of the separation from the residential zoning. The variances really will allow really quality development on the corner, but won't have any adverse impact on anyone. This setback variance is internal, as is really the acreage lot variance, lot-size variance for the Jiffy Lube. It also will preserve the opportunities, the maximum opportunities for kind of reuse of the remaining lands of the property owner. Again, there's a very good chance that the building, the commercial building will be reused, but if it's not, if somebody comes along with another plan, we're really providing the maximum opportunity to have the best possible use of the remaining property. Whether the benefits stop by the applicant can be achieved by some other feasible method, we do not believe there, there is no other alternative to the granting of the variances. You know, I think that if we didn't have these variances, we just wouldn't be able to carve out an appropriate development site. Whether the variances are substantial, I don't think they're substantial in nature, impact, or amount. Again, given the location and the physical conditions of the property, the existing structures that we have to work with, the need to have driveways for the new development in appropriate locations, so those are the things that really drive kind of the layout of the, of the plan. Whether, whether the proposed variances would have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the district or the neighborhood. Again, we're cleaning up the site, I think we're making significant improvements to the physical condition of the property. We are cleaning up some driveway conditions, some non-conforming setbacks, some non-conforming structures, and that, all of that really is an improvement to the existing conditions with a code-compliant development that is, the planning boards looked at it, we're proposing, you know, an attractive new building, it'll have the appropriate landscaping, we're gonna improve the safety of the driveways, it's gonna be a quality improvement to the corner. And whether the difficulty was self-created, obviously anybody who chooses to do something, anytime you wanna build something, there is an element of self-creation, but it's the, the hardship really is created by the existing conditions. Again, we're not starting with a big, open piece of land, we have to work with the existing conditions. We have these structures, we can't move them, so we're really working with the location of the houses and the existing conditions to, to lay out this subdivision and this site plan. So I don't, I, I think those are the, the reasons that we need these variances, they really are not self-created. As far as comments, so there were some DRC comments, a couple of them were, let's see, there was a, a comment about a croaked, sorry, concrete island in the Ridge Road driveway that will be corrected when the application is submitted to the planning board. A second comment was about relocating the sign so that it is code-compliant, that also can be done, so that we can, we won't need a variance for that. The third comment had to do with the single-family residence on Jackson Road, and again, the concern for the 100-foot buffer to the residential area to the south, and concerns about, you know, potential for development of, of this area. So I think that it's appropriate to leave that to a future time, since we don't know what's gonna be built or done with the remainder of the property. Let's see, county referral comments are attached, there was really nothing in the comments of any significance. There was a letter from a resident opposing the project, it's a resident who lives a fair distance, I think several blocks from the location, was concerned with 18-wheel delivery trucks and tankers for disposal of used oil. There will be no 18-wheel trucks, it's not the type of truck sizes they get at Jiffy Lube, so that should be a non-issue. They also commented on a small strip plaza or offices that were previously proposed. That proposal, I think she was probably referring to the Taylor proposal, which Taylor canceled the contract and did not move forward with that, they lost the tenant. So I think that those comments, while she expresses some concerns, I don't think those are concerns that really apply to this project. And as I said, I think the only other comments I saw were from the planning board, which supported the granting of the variances, and I think you have that, and, you know, we'd be happy to answer questions, give you more information. I hope I didn't talk too fast.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
The nine-foot setback, it's a side setback, what is it to?
What is it?
The nine foot.
The nine-foot setback?
Yes.
That's being requested. What is it to?
It is right here, Don. It is the two-story house, it is the house at 974 Jackson Road, so it is the setback from that house to the property line that is being created.
Right, but what?
It's on the side to the south.
But what, or to what? It's a setback for, yes, sorry.
Well, they created a lot line.
To that, to the lot line?
Yeah.
For MC to, but that's still the same district?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, but they're creating.
They created a lot line which is nine feet from the lot.
Yeah, that's a little confusing, is what I'm saying. There, there should be a couple additional variances. Oh, you're, so the, so it's to the other lot, I see. Right, what you're doing, you're establishing two lots. So it's for the other lot, it's not for the Jiffy Lube lot? Right.
We're just creating.
You're, you're subdividing the two, one and two, I get that, okay. I was thinking that it was on this parcel, gotcha.
No, no, yeah.
So the only, the only impact on this parcel from the area variance, for the parcel with the Jiffy Lube, is the, the area?
Correct, yeah.
What about the dumpster enclosure? That looks like it's only two or three feet off the line.
There's, there's supposed to be buffer separations for that.
Yeah.
That's.
But I, I don't see a dimension there.
Yeah, they're not listed either.
There's a dumpster in the south, it's corner.
Yeah, the side buffer should be 20 feet total, the rear buffer should be 25 feet.
So you're telling us that there's some variances, additional variances that weren't going down?
No, that's, that's my opinion.
We did review, I think, we did get a list of, we did get a review back with the, the necessary variances.
Because looking at the separation from the apron to Jackson Road to the Jiffy Lube, it'll be a 3.5-foot separation from edge of pavement to the property line, there should be a 20-foot separation there. If you're looking at that as a side, if you're looking at that as a rear, that would be 75 feet. I'm, I'm sorry, buffer would be 25 feet.
If you bear with me, I have to see if I can track down the email with the review, and I, I don't know how that was done, Josh. I don't know who does the review, or how that.
Several people. No, I, I was very confused with the nine foot, and I thought it just dealt with this property, but now then, I'm looking at the remaining properties listed as lot one and then lot two, so you're combining four properties into two lots?
So, yes, I believe this is the subdivision here. So if you, I have my mask on, it's possible.
I, I, I know, I'm there myself.
So we have the corner parcel right here, this is 1161, then we have 974. A portion of the land at 974 is, is gonna be joined in to the, to the corner parcel for Jiffy Lube. The house at 1171, that is also, that is. The house at eleven seventy-one, that is also, that is also having a lot line change. The staff area is gonna be combined with the remainder of nine seventy-four and the remaining holdings of the owner. And that frontage portion is part of the Jiffy Loop parcel. Does that all make sense? Does it help the site to build on?
Now it does.
Okay.
Now, with you establishing these new property lines, why could, but there again, my opinion, you, you're going to require a variance the way it's presented at this point in time for a twenty-foot buffer or twenty-five-foot buffer, depending if it's considered side or rear. Why could that not be subdivided so it complies with that?
Why would it not be subdivided to comply with?
The, the necessary buffers. This way you could take care of the area.
So we were not aware that there was a buffer variance was not pointed out at the park. So, so we're not aware that that was an issue. We can suddenly go back and look at it.
So are you saying, once you get a use variance, it's different zoning there?
Well, the big thing is the use variance. The area variances, uh, come down the road.
That stands the reason, if they redo the lines, then you don't want to plug in the variance.
That, that's what I'm.
Then be cup, yeah, be cups two different zoning.
Well, not while it's still located MC area.
But you eliminate, we could eliminate all of the variances in terms of the area.
Yep.
So the buffers are still within the MC, not just between the residential and the MC?
This, this whole project falls within the MC zone, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Even the property along Jackson Road.
I, I, I think we, we ran into the buffer issue internal to itself, right across the street. And all those projects, right? With the car wash, with, through the bugs, with everything that's in there.
Okay, so I have a district buffer, oh, a hundred feet that's required between lot one, two, combined lots, and the residential property further to the south. And then within the MC, I still have either a buffer of twenty feet if it's a side or twenty-five feet if it's a rear between the properties within the MC, okay?
Okay. And right now, uh, like I say, I'm finding one dimension that's three and a half feet to the north along the, um, apron to Jackson Road. So that should be twenty-five, uh, twenty feet or twenty-five feet of landscape area. Ms. Spoh, do you wanna, uh, agree, uh, for the board to just undertake the use component tonight? And, uh, see if we can tackle that and then?
I, I think we'd like to at least get that done. And if, I, this is new information.
Right, and then give you a chance to address.
Yes, and we are, and I should point out, we are requesting the minimum relief necessary in terms of our, our use variance as well. We're just keeping it to the Jiffy Loop project. Yeah, I guess let's focus, focus on the use variance.
Yeah, yeah, just, just to close out on, on this, the thought about the, the area. Wha- what's the rationale? Because you, you said that you, the existing lot lines, you reconfigured them regardless anyway, right? The two, the first two off of Jackson, along Ridge, that make up the Jiffy Loop parcel. You reconfigured them from their current configuration, correct?
Yeah, essentially.
As exists today. I'm just, wha- why can't you get the, the additional four thousand square feet?
Well, I think there's two things. One, the site was designed to meet the needs of Jiffy Loop. And then when you look at code compliance, I think we looked at the current property owner owning this house and what he wanted to do with this house, who wants to keep this house, 'cause that house is.
No, I, I understand that. I think my, my point would be more to the southeast, that section in there.
Into this area?
Right, you could carve out an additional four thousand square feet to meet the area?
Because I think what we want to do is we don't wanna hinder the ability to repurpose the remaining property. And we don't know who's gonna use it. We don't know who's gonna come along. And I think we want, well.
Yeah, I think there's, uh, again, for the record, I'm Chris Spoyea with Bowler Engineering. And, um, this is a, an application where we're making a lot of things better. We're going from four small lots, uh, one of which is eighteen thousand square feet today, right? So they're very small lots. And we're making the situation better by going from four lots to two lots. So even if we proposed half the size of the lot that we did now, it would be a vast, very great improvement from the situation that is out there today. So we had to say, okay, we're definitely making an improvement by going from four lots to two lots. All of the lots, both those lots are coming more in conformance and compliance with code. And then the applicant, uh, the, the remaining landowner is going to be left with a lot that he's gonna hopefully be able to somehow realize a return on. So we've taken the least amount of space that we can while increasing the lot size, yet allowing him to have utilization of the most part of his land for future use. Because he's gonna have challenges as noted here, whether it's a sewer easement that goes back, uh, through that property or whether it's the buffers that we were just talking about to the residential district. So, um, we want to make sure that he's afforded the opportunity to have, uh, all of the options that he can with those lot sizes. So the lot lines are there for those reasons that want to save those two structures, making that corner lot much more performance with the code and yet allowing him to, uh, develop more in the future. Because we are a very unique use here on this property. So you would be hard-pressed to find a user that is going to take only three thousand square feet, only need twelve parking spaces. I mean, that's, that's small, twelve parking spaces. Use no water, really, produce no sewer. So we, it's a perfect situation where we can take his small lots, combine them, and, and take the small lot, the corner, and, and have this use. It's very, it's almost tailor-made for it.
So, but we did not, you know, we're not including the other property in the use variance 'cause there's no, no known user for it. But it is, it has been marketed for quite some time. And the hope is that he will get a user in there after this is proved.
Okay, so, uh, I think what we're hearing is you're gonna table the area variance portion of your application to the April thirteenth meeting, is that correct?
I guess I need a clarification. Are you telling me we need addition, we do need additional area variances? Will we leave here tonight knowing exactly what we need? Or?
If I had a map that was the scale, I'd be happy to offer that, too.
Now, buffers are a pavement also.
I'm sorry?
Buffers are a pavement also, not just building.
That's correct.
And they got the driveway right along the lot line.
That's correct.
I don't even think it's five foot, which would be the residential.
I, I use my math anyway, it looks like it's three-point-five feet.
The buffer can be, it, it's internal to itself. We, we dealt with this next door.
So you're saying this, so where is it, so it, it is a variance or isn't it?
It would require a variance. You don't meet the buffer requirement.
We need to add that.
We should probably tackle the use variance because without a use variance, all the rest of it.
Yeah, well, I'm just asking her if she's willing to table it.
Yeah, I mean, if that's what you. Maybe you give them some direction out of all this.
Would like us to do, we, we're gonna have to be back here if we need a buffer. That's why I asked for a clarification that we need another variance.
We, we, we're gonna move forward with the use variance. We, I'm asking you if you're willing to accept to table this piece of the area variance so we can move on to the other part.
Yes, yes.
Okay. All in favor of tabling the area variance request for, uh, this Ridge Road Jiffy Loop project to April thirteenth?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So with respect to the, to the use variance, uh, there are two key documents here. One dated March eighth, twenty twenty-one, prepared by Ms. Brug. And the other prepared by, uh, Caliber, which is dated January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. And that was prepared by Jacob Rivera, correct? Those address, I, I believe in addition to, there, there is some area variance, um, language in here. But it does address the, uh, use variance requests, how the property has been marketed. It also addresses the financial, uh, statement for two thousand seventeen through two thousand and twenty, documenting that it has lost, um, money consecutively for those four years. And then also on the Caliber document, letter, it goes into detail on who this property was marketed to and the reduction in pricing history, uh, over the time that it was marketed by Caliber. Prior to Caliber, I understand it was marketed by who?
It's Hunt, Hunt Magellan and Pyramid and.
Which is in your.
Possibly one more, yeah.
March twenty, March eighth.
Yeah.
There is automotive use, uh, that Limelight across the street, Kitty Corner. Is that, I don't have the zoning map, is that MC?
Directly across the street?
Kitty Corner, Limelight, it's been three or four things, uh, just to the east and on the south side of Ridge.
Yes, that is MC.
That's MC, which is automotive use. Is, uh, auto zone, is that considered automotive use?
Yes, they receive the variance.
They receive the variance, too. And then just south of there in the, uh, Plaza with, um, not Sabres, but what's the other one?
The Royal Car Wash.
Royal?
No, the, um, sorry. Happy Days is in the front, in the back is, uh.
Goodwill on the back.
Goodwill, and then there's the Mavis. Is that MC district?
That's MC, they receive, right.
Yep, so that's MC, that's an identical use to this, correct? Um, in the MC district. So, anyway, um, if we proceed with the, uh, use variance, I would suggest that we just adopt what's been presented.
Final, financial statements.
Sorry, those are my points, so go ahead.
Anybody else?
No, I, I think it's a great use of a, um, commercial property, uh, low intensity and, uh, especially at that intersection. Knowing the number of applicants that were interested at this location. I believe Ms. Brug did indicate, uh, fast track, and they were discouraged. I believe after that, the board did receive a proposal for a little strip plaza, which variances were granted.
They were, they called it all four properties, I think.
Yeah, yes, you're correct. But I think, uh, the loop that's being presented and the use that's being presented as a Jiffy Loop, I think be a great, uh, use of the property.
How about the traffic? How many, how many vehicles a day do you anticipate? Do you have a?
If they're super successful, they'll have thirty to thirty-five customers a day.
So the Royal Car Wash has probably ten times that a day. That's where the cars are.
An hour.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just guessing, but I, there's always cars lined up. I mean, they have enough stacking room, but it's a lot of traffic.
Definitely much more traffic.
So, I'm just trying to make a comparison relative to that use. This is much less impactful as far as traffic generation.
Plus, I think with only four days, you're never releasing four cars all at the same time. So it's very minimal, a lot of impact on the Jackson.
If I need to get oil changed and there's a line, I keep going, I just, I'll go tomorrow. You know, people don't wait in line for an hour for an oil change, that's just the way it is today.
The reconciliation sheet you have of, of income, um, that's, I guess, sandwiched between your letter and Caliber's. What, what's the income coming from?
Uh, so there is, there's the income. So there is a tenant in, uh, the house at Jackson, nine seventy-four. There is a tenant on the first floor. There is no income from it. So I don't have income to pay the taxes, insurance expenses.
Yeah, it appears to be, uh, it would be different to apartments. Yeah, post rentals, yeah.
And that's without any, um, that's without any mortgage or?
Yes, I did not include the, there are, yeah, doesn't include any mortgage.
So then in addition to, uh, the record that the chairman indicated, there's also that reconciliation of, uh, of, uh, negative income for the preceding four years?
That corn's been for sale a long time.
This is unlisted, right? Pursuant NYCR Section six seventeen eighty, Envato Malco, I'll make a motion, uh, this would be an unlisted action.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, once again, we're not going to address the area variances requested tonight. That portion's been tabled to the April thirteenth meeting. And we will open it up to public comment. If you have any comments for or against this application, please call eight seven two seventy eleven. It's a waiting game now.
Should I comment?
You know, one of the, um, app, or one of the neighbors were concerned about large tanker trucks. And you mentioned the eighteen, how you, how do you pick up, which kind of vehicle? What kind of vehicle takes the old oil away and brings the fresh supplies?
They're, uh, straight body trucks, no pivot point in them. And the, the volume isn't that great. Gonna try to trade it would be warranted for those types of pickups. And then also the used oil is, uh, usually picked up by a, a dealer specific to the marketplace which Jiffy Loop is located.
Recycle, they recycle it.
Right, it wouldn't be, um, shipped across the state to a central location, it's, it's handled locally.
But it's like, I was, over on Ridge Road East, there's a new one over there. So they used to be on a corner, now they're not in a corner. But, uh, they dramatically changed the, um, facade of those.
Hmm, yeah.
It's actually a pretty nice-looking building.
Yeah, the planning board seemed pretty satisfied with where we're headed with it. And, uh, I think we'll have a nice project, but this board has the ultimate. I think with the use variance, it, uh, it doesn't go anywhere without you, so.
It's a brick, brick building, not that it affects?
It will be brick, and that was at the request of the town.
Tony Cachani is a mason. He was his entire life, so he loves brick, yes.
That, that concludes a portion of this meeting. I, I would make a motion, once again, adopting. I don't know if we need to go back through and reiterate all of this, do you?
You may get a record out of this.
Right, um, so we'll adopt the, once again, I'll repeat this part. We'll adopt the letter from, um, Ms. Brug on March eighth, twenty twenty-one, the financial statement that's including, included therein, and the January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one letter from Caliber's Jacob Rivera, as the, um, findings for the application. And with that being said, we'll pull this back down. I would make a motion to grant an area variance for the Jiffy Loop, uh, project located at eleven sixty-one and eleven seventy-one Ridge Road and nine seventy, no, it's not nine seventy-four Jackson Road. We're just dealing with this use variance just like the.
It does, it could approach the land of nine seventy-four.
Okay.
And use variance, right, not area variance?
Sorry, I didn't, I thought I said use, no?
I just wanna make sure, yeah.
Um, no, I thi- I think I said it correctly. Grant a use variance for Jiffy Loop, which is now lot one, consisting of, um, property associated with eleven sixty-one, eleven seventy-one, and nine seventy-four Jackson Road, correct?
Yes.
From the applicant Guggenheim Development Services LLC. For, um, let me skim down through this. Which Jiffy Loop is an auto care shop on a proposed point-eight-three acre, acre parcel consisting of existing SBL numbers zero eight zero dot thirteen dash two dash one, zero eight zero dot thirteen dash two dash two, and zero eight zero dot thirteen dash two dash fifty-two, located in a MC medium-intensity commercial district under Section two-two-five dash seventeen of the Code of the Towne of Webster.
Did you reference the map? But the reason, the only reason I bring it up is because we're not giving, uh, use variance to all of nine seventy-four, just.
Lot one is what I referenced.
Lot one. Lot one.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
And it's eight, point eight four, not to be nitpicky. I'll make sure it's right.
Second?
Yeah. Point eight four.
Mr. Newtown?
Aye.
Mr. Baran?
Aye.
Mrs. Bolo? Aye. Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Stafford?
Aye.
Okay, you have your use variance. We will adjust the area variances in, on April thirteenth.
Do we need to submit anything to, to add that variance? Or will you add it to the legal notice?
We, we probably will have to re-advertise it because it wasn't previously included in the advertisement, right? Yes, we will re-advertise what the whole was.
Do you need anything from us, or?
I'll follow up with you.
Okay, yeah, just let us know if you need a letter or if you need to note it on the plan or anything like that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
If you are looking for a buffer variance just there, should we obtain a letter from our adjacent neighbor that that buffer would be against?
Isn't the buffer two-year-old?
It would be part of this whole project, but we could for the record.
I don't think we need it.
I mean, of course he's going to hear my question. Yeah, you're talking to my buddy. The biggest concern I have is that we can't change the plan too much. That, that's why I'm.
I understand, I think we understand the variance request, but we just need to address those issues.